Resources and also to demonstrate what works best for her. She is very dedicated to her work and works hard to make our students, school, and mentees a success. I am very grateful to her kindness and being able to work alongside her as her mentor. Her other BT said, "When I think about Ms. Stokes, I am reminded of the quote, 'Never underestimate the difference you make and the life you touch.'" Ms. Stokes is one of those rare individuals who doesn't seek a spotlight but makes a profound difference every single day. She truly loves her students and builds exceptional relationships with them. Because of that, her students are motivated, dedicated, and willing to work hard to achieve success. A true mentor leads by example. And each day, I'm inspired by the way she leads her classroom with integrity, passion, and consistency. In addition to her remarkable work with students, Ms. Stokes is incredible quality. She is always willing to help and has never made me feel like I'm interrupting or burdening her. She takes time to stop, listen, and ensure I have the information I need. I trust her completely because I know that when she gives me an answer, it's not just a guess. It's researched, accurate, and done the right way. She doesn't pretend to know everything and she never flies by the seat of her family. Instead, she takes the time to verify and make sure she's giving us correct thoughtful guidance. She does the things the right way, invests the time and effort, and never looks for recognition or pat on the back. Her work ethic is beyond question and the impact she has is lasting and deeply meaningful. Thank you, Ms. Stokes, for supporting our two BTs at Rogers this year.
The sixth through 12th mentor of the month this month is Jody Hollis. Jody has an extensive amount of knowledge and these are some things that your BTs in your fellow department people, you know who they are, have said about you. You actively advocate for beginning teachers with, by connecting them with resources, opportunities, and you make sure that they're successful. You consistently model professionalism, reliability, and a commitment to help them grow. One of them said, "If it wasn't for Jody, I don't know that I'd come to work every day." She does, she helps it. Consistently, you foster a positive collaborative relationship that ensures that not only is your BT, but your other people in your department will value her and support her. And as your BT said, he is like my work dad. He supported me when I needed it and he's there when I don't. I mean, he's always there when I need it even when he knows that I don't know it. I think she's trying to say that you know when she needs it even when she doesn't. And I can say, as a witness to it firsthand, Jody, you do mentor with a strong hand and a passion that makes them want to come back with a mission. And they will give you your advice. Congratulations. It's impressive.
Can we give our mentors another hand? Awesome job. Superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you so much, Tere Purvis. We have a lot of great things to talk about tonight. First off, wow, we have so much to celebrate. First off, our principals. On May 1st, we celebrated School Principals Day. And let me tell you, Martin County Schools is absolutely best with some of the best school principals this side of heaven. Our principals lead with passion, with dedication, with determination. I just can't say enough good things about them. We've had so many new and wonderful opportunities in our schools over the last several years and these principals are leading the charge and leading the challenge and we're just so thankful for them. So shout out to each and every one of our school principals. You are making a difference every single day and we appreciate you. We are also this week celebrating National School Nutrition Employee Appreciation Week. Our lunch superheroes is what we refer to them as. They go above and beyond. These employees come in incredibly early in the morning. I'm talking about before many of us have ever even thought about getting up. They're already at the job getting a nutritious breakfast ready for our children. And the same with lunch. Child nutrition workers, I'm telling you, this is hard physical labor. Lifting these large plant pans of food and not only is it nutritious, but it is also very, very tasty. They do such an amazing job. And so, we just wanted to take a moment tonight to appreciate our entire school nutrition staff. Also, Mr. Barber, our district child nutrition director. We want to celebrate him and thank him for the difference that he is making with our school nutrition department. Sometimes, this is the only meals or these two are the only meals our children get. And we don't need to take that for granted. These people are true heroes and we're so thankful for them. Tonight, the celebration continues because this is actually nationwide Teachers and Staff Appreciation Week. This week, we are celebrating the staff of Martin County Schools. Every staff member, our bus drivers, our custodians, our teachers, every person who pours into the life of our children in Martin County Schools. This week, we are celebrating you. Each school has special things planned every day to celebrate their staff, but also the district has some special things to celebrate their staff. I just cannot tell you how blessed we are with the best teachers and staff across our entire district. People that go above and beyond, people that give everything they can possibly give to help our children and our community be the best that they can be. And we're just so thankful. And so, tonight, we are actually going to kick off our celebration with some special drawings. Every day this week, we are going to be doing drawings. Most of the time, these drawings are going to be on social media, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, as well as our school website. But tonight, since we had a board meeting, we thought, what a better way to kick off Teachers and Staff Appreciation Week by actually giving away the first prizes at our school board meeting. So we have several prizes to give away tonight. And we're going to start with number one. First of all, our local businesses have come together to donate these prizes in celebration of our teachers and staff. We are going to be celebrating our local businesses through this as well. So many people in Martin County contribute to the success of our children, including our local businesses. So thank you to every business that has contributed to celebrating our teachers and staff this week. Starting with HTM Concepts in Williamson. Our first prize is going to be a Gator hat from HTM. And as well as our local Subway. Subway at the New Dixie location beside Riverside Middle School has donated numerous gift certificates for us to give away this week. So the first prize is going to be from HTM as well as from Subway. And just in case you wanted to see, I would love to win this, okay? And we have, we are going to be doing certified staff as well as non-certified staff. So we have two big prize bowls up here. And so, we're going to be alternating certified and non-certified because we know the contribution that every single person makes to Martin County Schools. And so, tonight, we're going to start with our certified staff and this is the first drawing. Ms. Purvis, would you be willing to draw her name? Okay, let's see. Our first winner tonight is Martin County High School Carolyn Lavelle, our school counselor. Congratulations. You are our first winner. Thank you Subway and HTM. We will get your prize to you. Our second prize is a drawstring bag from HTM Concepts and a sub again from the location right beside Riverside Middle School. This is really cute. All right, and this one is going to be for a non-certified staff member. Mr. Scott, will you pull? Okay, and the winner here is from Rogers Elementary School, Sierra Ambrose, a teacher assistant at Rogers. Congratulations. Okay, and next up, we have two free subs from Subway. All right, I'll come down here. Mr. Baker, if you'll draw. All right, our winner is from Jamesville Elementary School, Julie Thomas, our school nurse. Congratulations. And next, we have from Cash Eye Forest Products, a $50 gift card. It will be a Visa gift card that you can use anywhere. All right, so let me come down here. $50 Visa gift card. Okay, $50 Visa gift card from Cash Eye Forest Products going to Marvin Brown from Williamson Primary School. He is our custodian. Congratulations, Mr. Brown. And next up, we have a free oil change from Matt Sessom's Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram here in Windsor. So this is for, in Williamson, this is a free oil change. So we'll come down here to Mr. Driver.
My name's Taylor Mear.
All right, Amy Versanti from Jamesville Elementary School, second grade teacher. Congratulations to all of our winners. We are going to be doing these drawings every single day. Thank you is just not enough. We want to celebrate you and these are just small tokens to say that not only Martin County Schools, not only our Board of Education, but the entire community in Martin County want to celebrate the amazing teachers and staff. We have so many wonderful things going on because of your hard work and your dedication. So every single day, we will be back online with new drawings, new prizes just for you. So thank you for what you do. We're going to make this a special, awesome week in your honor. So happy Teachers and Staff Appreciation Week. Continuing along with the superintendent's report, boy, we have a lot of good things going on. How about that we are going to have seven students graduate with their CNA license degree certificate before they ever graduate from high school? Our Health Science Program is rocking at Martin County High School and our early college program is absolutely outstanding. These students are a part of our regular high school and they are graduating with their CNA. They can go to work upon graduation and make a living wage. Congratulations to these students who are already ahead. Some of them are going to continue and go on for their LPN and their ARN degree, but they already have that CNA under their belt. Congratulations. Shout out to Martin County High School who has already seen a 13% increase in their work key certification. So these are students that are graduating with national certifications that can go to work, that can be work-ready straight out of high school and make a living wage. 13% increase in this just over the last year. So congratulations to Mr. Mizell, every person at Martin County High School, and Mr. Jason Wim and our CTE Department for not only providing more opportunities, but for helping our students be successful in each and every one of those opportunities. Shout out again to Rogers Elementary School. We just can't say enough. You know, we celebrate our athletes as we should. But let me tell you what Battle of the Books is. It's like athletics for the brain, okay? These kids started reading these books last summer. They have read these books all year. They have practiced after school. They have worked incredibly hard. So I want you to, that's just a great way to understand the work that these children have put in. It's like an athletic competition that goes on all year for the brain. And we're just incredibly proud that our children out of the entire region placed third. And we are just so proud and want to give a special shout out to their coach, Ms. Mary Salz, the whole team, to our parents who invested in supporting these children in this endeavor. That was no small feat and we are just so, so proud. Congratulations to our teachers who have completed the Letters certification. This is a lot of work. Letters is an initiative for North Carolina teachers to really dig into how we teach children to read. And it comes with a lot of work, a lot of study, a lot of preparation. And these teachers have been working incredibly hard to complete this. So we just wanted to give a congratulations to Donna Wynn, Tiffany Bennett, Caroline Reason, Priscilla Baker, Emily Brown, and Donnette Grace. These folks have gone above and beyond and put in many, many hours of work and can now say that they are Letters trained and certified. Also wanted to give a shout out to our Gold Star winners. So this year, we started a new initiative in Martin County Schools where we are giving Gold Stars periodically to employees that are just shining bright. They're going above and beyond. Some of these were awarded for having the highest test data that we've ever had in certain areas. Some of these were awarded for just going above and beyond for our students in different ways, for just being the superhero that some of them need in their life. And so, please check out our social media and celebrate with us each of these amazing folks in Martin County Schools. We are truly blessed with the best and this is just another way that we want to celebrate the best staff this side of heaven. Bringing home the gold. Let me tell you about athletics. Now, I mentioned that earlier. We have got some phenomenal things happening across Martin County in athletics. First of all, our track team. Our track team is the conference champions for not only the boys but for the girls as well. We are the girls and boys conference champions. Shout out also goes to all of the coaches of our track team. Ms. Wheeler, CP Point, Ms. Hughes. All of those folks were selected as the Coach of the Year for the conference as well. We are, yeah, blessed with the best. Our baseball team, in a tough battle, beat Per Quimmons for the conference tournament championship. Super proud of them moving on into the playoffs. Our girls softball team moving on into the playoffs. Gator tennis, they're the conference champions and headed to third round of the state playoffs tomorrow. Send us all your prayers and positive vibes. I know they're going to represent us well. And this is in addition to numerous individual students. I do have to give a shout out to Kristi who qualified for the state championships. This is the first singles player to do this in Martin County since 2016. So shout out to that student. We're going to keep you posted on our individual students as well. Continuing on, you know, I had the incredible privilege to actually attend our golf championship this year. Our golf conference championship was held right here in Martin County at Roanoke Country Club. And I went over and I watched each of our guys and girls, because we do have some girls on the team as well, went over and watched them tee off. They did a phenomenal job, actually came in second in the conference. They are also headed to the regionals. They competed today. I have not got the update on how we did. Let me check my phone again right now. I haven't got the update yet on how we finished today, but we are very, very thankful for all the work that Coach Wim put in with them. Some of these students never play golf until they get to the high school level. So Coach Wim has invested in them, teaching them the game, and it's just another opportunity for our kids to shine. I will tell you, I was very impressed when I watched them play. So thank you to everybody who's invested in that awesome, awesome spring athle- So thank you to everybody who's invested in that awesome, awesome spring athletics. Now, we always tell you that Martin offers more. We have opportunities for everybody. So this weekend, for the first time ever, come see the brand-new Martin Innovative Middle School Theater Department in action. They are putting on their very first production. The name of it is Into the Woods. They have been working on this four months. Um, you have seen through the Opry, they were there, fundraising, uh, raising money for their costumes, to build their sets, all the things. And so this weekend, they are going to shine. We have performances on May 9th and 10th at 7:00 PM, and then May 11th at 2:00 PM. It will be at Martin County Auditorium. Adults are $10, students are $8, and children under five are free. You don't want to miss this. I'm telling you, they've been working so hard, and it is going to be amazing. Come out and support them. Three shows to, um, to support our brand-new Martin County Schools Theater Department. More opportunities coming your way. The server driver education classes have been posted. Check out our web, website and social media to get those dates if that applies for your child. Our cheer tryouts are coming up very, very soon, May 20th through 21st. If your child is interested in being a Martin County High School cheer, cheerleader and working with some of the best we have around, please, we'd love to see your child at tryouts on these dates. Our color guard is also auditioning for next fall, May 19th through 21st in the Martin County High School Band Room after school. Would love for, to help you come out. Find your fit. Try something new. We have many, many opportunities, and we have a talent show coming up at Martin County High School on May 12th at 6:00 PM. Come on out. Admission is $5 per person. Any student, um, without any office referrals, you can get in for free as the PBIS may incent. So come on out and see the tremendous talent that we have going on at Martin County High School. The news keeps coming as Martin County Schools has really scored big. We have a brand-new table in our Health Sciences class that is simply amazing. It is a, uh, interactive human body that is helping our students learn everything they need to know to be prepared for a career in Health Sciences. If you have not had an opportunity to see it, we would love to take you on a tour. It is a true game changer in the Health Sciences curriculum. You heard us say earlier, we have seven students that are currently going to be certified CNAs before they graduate. This is another level in our Health Sciences program, um, just unmatched opportunities. We're, we're the only one that has this in Martin County, but we're one of the only ones in the entire region that has this opportunity for our children. It is spectacular, and we're going to be sharing more with you about this again on social media. We'll have some videos to explain a little bit more, but phenomenal opportunities for our children. MCS Future Class of 2038, we are enrolling you. Welcome to Martin County Schools. It is time to get our kindergartners enrolled. Do want to give a huge shout out to the Curriculum Department, Abby Mizell, and all the volunteers that helped make our kindergarten registration a big success. If you have a child that will be enrolling in kindergarten next year and you have not, signed them up yet, please reach out to us. We'd be glad to help you at Central Office and connect you with the right folks, or you can call your child's school. We want to get them registered and get everything in place to ensure that we are ready for the best school year ever next year. We are also offering kindergarten sneak peeks. We've already had one sneak peek opportunity. What is this? This is where you can come into the school as a rising kindergartner with your family. You get to go to the classrooms, meet the kindergarten staff, go to the music class, the art class, the PE class, go eat lunch in the cafeteria, learn about school-wide expectations, come into the school and really get a sneak peek of the amazing things you're going to have in kindergarten. So we have already had one around these, and we're going to be offering another. More dates will be published later this week. So we want to invite you to get a sneak peek of the absolute best kindergarten experience you're going to get anywhere. More information to come, and shout out to our amazing schools for offering this opportunity. The Special Olympics is one of the best days of the school year, and we were so excited to celebrate that last week. Want to give a special shout out to Regina Smith, who organizes this event for Martin County, to all of our principals, exceptional children's teachers. Um, I had the privilege of being there and watching our athletes perform, and I'm telling you, it's one of the best events ever. They did a phenomenal job. All of our schools were real, well-represented, represented, and I just want to give a special thank you to those volunteers at the kitchen, to those volunteers working with athletes. It was just a beautiful day where our entire community came together and supported, um, the children of Martin County. So congratulations to all of our Special Olympians, and thank you to all those who made it possible. We are excited to announce a new resource on behalf of the Martin County Schools Community Coalition. We have worked to establish a website of all community resources. So for example, if you are struggling with food insecurity and you need to know where to turn, this is the website with you. If you are struggling to find childcare and you need to know where to look, this is the website for you. If you need to know more about, um, Martin County Schools or about, uh, local organizations that can, faith-based organizations, this community coalition is a community resource list. So if you don't know where you can go for help, our goal is this one-click site that will help you know. This is created on behalf of the Martin County Schools Community Coalition. Special shout out to Ms. Stalls, who has organized this into a website on behalf of the coalition to be a resource for our community. If you are a local business, a, a local support group, uh, someone who can offer support, please reach out to us if we don't have you listed on the website, because we want to make sure our entire community knows where to go if they need support. The good news keeps coming from Martin County. We are launching a special male mentor program in collaboration with Conania at the middle school level. So we are going to be working with our middle school-aged males in a mentor program. This will be a program that happens after school on a daily basis as well as throughout the summer. We know that there are many risk factors trying to pull some of our young men in the wrong direction, and so this program has been established to make sure they stay on the right track and going in the right direction. Mr. Rondo Floyd will be one of our lead mentors for this program, and again, this will be going on after school and throughout the summer. Um, it is a phenomenal program. This is a, it's called Max Factor. It's something that has been in Pitt County Schools for many years, and we are blessed to be able to bring this to Martin County Schools. Uh, that is launching very soon, or it actually is launching right now. We're going to be enrolling students, um, currently hiring staff, so phenomenal opportunity. We're very grateful to the Prison Alliance, Judge Regina Parker, uh, everybody, and of course, Watsi Sutton from Conania Solutions for helping us turn this dream into a reality. This is going to be a great opportunity for our students. Just want to give a thank you to all the partnerships across Martin County. Um, thank you to Sweetwater Creek Seed Company for sponsoring our new AgroScience FFA garden at the Innovation Campus. So our children are actually, yes, they have their own garden, they're going their own food, and it's all sponsored by Sweetwater Creek Seed Company. Thank you, thank you, thank you for that. Thank you to Robert Seville United Methodist Churches for providing our BT treat for April, and thank you so much to Memorial Baptist Church, who has also, um, provided a professional learning at our BT, uh, professional learn, provided support at our BT professional learning. We have so many, um, community sponsors that are willing to come in. It takes a village, and we're thankful for you being a part of our village. Shout out to, um, Mr. Shelley Willingham. He was, he is our representative, who actually came into Riverside Middle School and visited with Martin Innovative Students. It was Brain Legislature School Day, and he came in and spent the day with us, spent some time with our amazing students, learning more about what Martin County Schools is offering, and we just appreciate him taking the time. We also wanted to talk a little bit about the partnership we have with North Carolina East Alliance at STEM East Industry and Schools Week. Our students were able to get some amazing opportunity as we celebrated industry and schools. As you know, we have really expanded our CTE opportunities as well as the STEM opportunities in Martin County Schools, and so students were able to connect with industry professionals, go into different businesses and organizations, and actually have hands-on experiences about future, um, careers in industry. We're also going to be providing follow-up opportunities this summer. So thank you to everybody who had a hand in our Industry and Schools Week. So many great field trips, so many people came to us, lots of hands-on learning opportunities for our students. Specifically, uh, speaking of opportunities, our summer camps are going to be unmatched. We have summer camps when we go on just about every week this summer. Parents, we do have links to these that are going to be going live on our Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and website. In a couple of days, we're giving you a heads up. You're going to be able to sign up. They are QR codes that are going to be on the signup sheet as well as live links for you to sign up for these camps. We are taking high school students on college tours. We are hosting fourth and fifth grade STEM camps. We're hoping, hosting score athletics camps. We're hosting, um, Health Sciences camps. We're hosting camps for our exceptional children. We're hosting camps for our AIG children. These camps are going to be spectacular, they're going to be top quality, and they're for Martin County School students. So in just a couple of days, make sure parents to check this out, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. There are more camps than I could mention tonight, but be sure to stay tuned on our, on all of our social media and our website, because that's where your signup will be. Why elementary school in Martin County? Why middle school in Martin County? Why high school? All I'm going to say tonight is that you need to stay tuned. We have proven over the last several years that Martin offers more. We have said if it's broken, we'll fix it. If we don't have it, we'll build it. We've established an early college. We've been selected by the state of North Carolina as their top pick to become an official early college high school. We receive full funding. We started an innovative middle school that's supported by East Carolina University and provided unmatched opportunities for middle school children. Absolutely amazing opportunities. Elementary, it's your turn. So in the coming weeks, we are going to have some big announcements for our elementary children, some new things that are going to be coming your way. Martin offers more. They're going to continue to offer more, and we're going to continue to be the best, and we're going to prove it to our families every single day. Stay tuned, because the best is yet to come. Elementary, be ready. We do want to end tonight by remembering one of our very special employees, Ms. Peggy Wilkins. She was a, um, school nutrition employee at EJ Hayes Elementary for many, many years. She was described as the light of the cafeteria, her positive attitude, infectious smile, and just love for her job and the children radiated in everything that she did. We are so thankful for everything that she did for Martin County Schools, and tonight we just wanted to take a moment to celebrate her, to honor her. Um, so if we could, let's have just a moment of silence in her memory. Thank you. We also had the passing of high school senior, Mr. Jaden Wiggins, on this past Friday. He was tragically killed in a car accident. Jaden was loved by all. That is the best way to put him. He was a very popular high school student. He was going to be graduating in just a few short weeks. Um, he loved welding. That was something he was very interested in. He wanted to be a truck driver when he graduated. He was the kind of person that wanted to make sure everybody else was okay. He greeted you in the morning, "Good morning, how are you?" And when he really loved you, he called you auntie. He had a lot of aunties at Martin County High School. Jaden was an amazing student who we will forever honor and remember. We want to send our prayers and condolences to his family during this difficult time, and if we could, again, just have a moment in his honor. Thank you. And as we close out tonight, we do want to make sure our families are aware of the end of your activities. The end of your activities can get very, very busy, very full, and we want to make sure we have strong communication with all of our families. So tomorrow, we will be publishing a full website with all testing schedules. Whether you're in kindergarten or a senior in high school, we have designed a website that has all of that information so that parents can stay informed. All the dates of end-of-grade testing, end-of-course testing, whatever it may be, will be on this site so that you know exactly when, what is happening. Also, awards days. We have also compiled a document that has every awards day that will take place in Martin County Schools. Many schools have multiple awards days because they do it by grade level. Many of our families have multiple children, so we have compiled this to make sure we are, um, communicating. Every awards day will be listed on this document, and again, it will be publicly released tomorrow. Just giving you a heads up to stay tuned to our website and social media for that information. This is just an attempt to help you stay organized and know all the amazing things that are coming up over the next several weeks. And parents, don't forget, the school choice window is open and it will be closing on May 31st. Martin County Schools offers school choice. We have school districts, but if your child needs to go to school outside of their designated district, you need to fill out the school choice form. Um, it can be found on our website. If you have any issues, just call us at Central Office and we'll walk you through it. We offer school choice. We want our students and our families to be in the school that's the best fit for their needs. That window will close on May 31st. Even if you are a student already receiving school choice, you do need to fill out the application every year. So if you are currently going to school outside your district, you filled the form out last year, this is something you have to do every year. I've also received, um, many questions recently as to if children from outside Martin County can come to Martin County Schools. The answer to that is yes. The process for that is to be released by your home district and then fill out the application for Martin County Schools. If you need help or support with that, please reach out to Central Office, and we will be glad to guide you through that process. Uh, the school choice is yours. Just make sure you fill out this application so that we can evaluate and plan appropriately. Again, thank you to our families. As we close out the superintendent's report tonight, come to school. Attendance is so important. In order to learn, you have to be here, and we need you in the seat as we strive to finish strong in this academic year. It's hard to believe that we're already at the end of the year, so make sure you're here every day unless you're sick. Be in that seat so we can make sure we finish strong. That concludes my report to your purpose.
Thank you, Dr. White. And Martin offers...
Martin.
Okay, we'll move to our information action items and ask Ms. Emily to come forward with the public school building capital fund application.
Good evening. Um, tonight, I just have for you, our, um, annual portion of the debt payment for Riverside Middle School is due, so we are requesting to draw down the funds from the Public School Building Capital Fund, or ADM Fund, um, so we would just need an approval to be able to draw those funds down for this payment this year.
Board, can we get a motion to approve the requested funding?
Sure.
And let me correct myself, debt payment. Um, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the Public School Building Capital Fund payment. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carry.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Chromebook purchase. Ms. Bennett.
Good evening.
Hello.
Um, so ACT and WorkKey testing is now online. Um, the online testing requires, um, a secure browser, and the secure browser needs, um, managed Chromebooks. Currently, our only managed Chromebooks are in the K2, um, grade levels. They use them for QR code logins, so we would need to purchase 400 Chromebooks and the Google Chrome Education upgrade for, um, 10th and 11th grade students. Um, there is a screenshot of the quote, um, which includes the 400 Chromebooks, the Chrome Education upgrade, um, and the white glove service, which equals out to 113,000...
220.
Yeah. Um, so just, uh, we just need approval for, um, it is a contract, so even though it's over 90,000, it is a contract, so we don't have to bid it out, um, but for the 113,000, 212 dollars.
Okay. Board, any questions before, uh, for a motion regarding Chromebook purchase? Then I would ask for a motion for approval for the 400 Chromebooks and the upgrade. Been properly moved and seconded to provide approval for the Chromebook purchase. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carry. Thank you so much, Ms. Bennett. Ms. Andrea Lilly. Policy updates.
Good evening. We have, um, given you a court packet this week, several policies that will be for partially tonight, um, that are injury and loss prevention... There are injury and loss prevention service animals in schools, release of students from schools, student insurance programs, communicable diseases for students, child abuse and related threats, and concussion and head injury. Do you have any questions about those policies?
Board, any clarification or questions? No ma'am, we did our homework. Thank you.
Thanks, that was frustrating. Appreciate it.
Markham Board of Education will now be closed session subject to the advice of the attorney pursuant to NC general statute 143-318.11A1 and A6 to prevent disclosure confidential personnel information under GS 115C-319 and to consider matters related to initial employment of an individual employee. The board will also go into closed session pursuant to general statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina general statute 143.318.11A1 and Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20USC 1232G and NC general statute 115C-402. The board was also going to close session to establish or instruct staff or agents concerning the terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real properties provided in North Carolina general statute 143-318.11A5.
Have a motion, can we have a second? Been properly moved and seconded to go into closed session. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carried, closed session. Motion carried, closed session. Action items? Can we have a motion to approve personnel?
Leave your friend.
Got a motion, got a second. From Mr. Schreiber, all in favor of approving personnel, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. We need a motion to approve the closed minutes and to keep them closed.
So moved.
Motion, second. They're properly moved, the seconded, all in favor of approving the closed minutes and keeping them closed, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. Do not have any public comments? Okay, so we'll move on to announcements. We do have a work session on May 19th. And then our next regular board meeting will be June 2nd. Graduation, yay, June the 6th, and that is our first combined graduation, right? Dr. White?
Yes, complete with fireworks.
Okay. Any comments before I ask for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, no comments. I just want to say happy Teachers Appreciation Week. You know, these teachers, they are touching our future and we appreciate everything. And with that said, may I have a motion to adjourn at 7:49?
So moved.
Second, been properly moved, the seconded, we will adjourn, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Meeting adjourned, you're lost.